Okay, we'll call this council meeting session order. It's Wednesday, August 18th. The time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge will be.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to your comments, have you read that, please?
The city council mantra. I am on the city council as an advocate of quality and effective city services. I will do what I can to promote cost-sensitive and professional services to city residents and visitors. I will do what I can to promote safe environment for business and families. It is my responsibility to contribute to stabilized environment for the city. I am an opponent of uproar, dissension, and conflict. I believe in law. I believe in routine. The greatest gift I can give to city residents is to provide services that are predictable. Every comment I make and every vote I cast will be motivated by the question, what is good with city residents and visitors? Number five, what I want for my family is what I want for all patrons of the city. I will champion the city. I will complement and reinforce often. I will suggest and recommend when necessary. I will support a majority position of the council. I may not agree, but once the vote is taken, I'm with the others. I will never come to a council meeting having made a promise to an individual or a group. At all times, I will remember I am a city official whose purpose is to serve and represent others and to act on their behalf. Number 10, courtesy is a rule. I will not take that rule. A council meeting is a business meeting. It is not entertainment. It is not a social hour. It is not a question and answer session. It is a business meeting. I am busy. The council members and the mayor are busy. The city staff and administrator are busy. Everyone is busy. At this meeting, I will do what I have to do. I will do it as fast as possible. I will respect the time.
Thank you, Council Berkeley. Okay, I will go ahead and open it up for visitor comments. Please keep your talks to five minutes and be courteous. Do the rule around here. Would you please state your name for the record?
Brady Pre. Yeah, I think your mantra is sort of a joke that you read it because you violate it like every week. But I guess it's good to have aspirations. This is not a normal city council. It is not normal for there to be so many things that the city is doing wrong that the plan to heist money on my water bill to build a police station isn't even on my top five list of things to complain about. See, finally Steve and I agree about something. It is not normal for there to be an hour of public comment each week that people are mad at you because people are scared of what you're going to do to their money. It is not normal or acceptable for a counselor to lock out of a meeting. It is not normal for the mayor to threaten to remove a counselor at the next meeting. It is not normal for the mayor to attack another counselor for asking about a $27,000 overage in the department he supervises and he knows nothing about. Hopefully, we will find out about what happened to that money tonight during our report. It is not normal to have two counselors openly lie in a public meeting on the record and have no consequences for lying. This is not how I expect the city to run and it certainly doesn't follow your mantra. It's not normal for people complaining about tourism and yet not ever mention the good things that have happened like the sandcastle contest, which was a great success this weekend. And I saw one person that's up there that take it that part and that was the mayor. I didn't see anybody else there. Who? Oh, I didn't see you Doug, but great. I am probably more aware than anyone in this room besides Tina of what is needed by tourism because I am probably the only other person here that's actually had to do that job. I was the chair of the chamber when the chamber had the tourism contract for the city. I was the person responsible for hiring, directory, directing and setting the goals for the tourism director and how the contract with the city was spent, which at the time was about $60,000. I can tell you, I failed miserably. I knew that we were failing. I certainly was not the first person at the chamber that failed. I was the third or the fourth person in a row and had plans to try and change it, but the board outvoted me and we returned the contract to you. And after a few sinking boats and a couple of mishaps, we finally got E2C. And since then, almost overnight, tourism amazingly changed. It became something that we just spent money on and got absolutely nothing for to an event that now brings thousands of people here every year and continues to grow. Yet, the inexperienced economy killer, Chilton, said in April that Halloween Town will be gone in two years. It's grown. It's grown every year. Except for COVID, which obviously had its own impact. It still went on. There were no instances of COVID from it and it's going to continue to grow. What do these comments that she made in April mean to potential developments for your riverfront, which you've been talking about a lot lately, and hotel builders? In two years, expect our town to die? As a community, we have not built one single thing that brings people here like Halloween Town does. We've always had softball, but I mentioned softball, but softball doesn't bring people here the way Halloween Town does. Those people have not saved the St. Helens businesses. So hopefully in the future, you might want to do some research before stating something that will have a vast negative impact on downtown businesses. Clearly, you don't even know what you don't know. You've had a special tourism meeting in April, decided not to do an RFP when everyone was a panish. What changed? Almost nothing. I am concerned about citizens that have Jessica as a caseworker. Since it's clear she's willing to lie, she lied here. Steve's lied here in public record and I think there should be consequences for that action. I think the council should take actions for saying that you have a list and you don't have a list. And Steve's too many to come up with. But I also think that he should have to have a business license. I'm certainly not going to buy a business license next year if a city councillor claims he has a business and doesn't. I have a business license, why should I? So you need to police your own self. You need to not be lying when you're on the public record and you need to get a business license. It's pretty simple.
Okay, visitor comment. That, I don't know what normal is, but I would agree that we can definitely do better. And that I admit it, my duty to try to turn this around. We have a duty to try to turn this around and be more professional. So I could take that to you as a citizen, so you know that we are committed to turning this around. I hope so. Okay, resolution number 1932. A resolution determining that a nuisance exists upon property located at 565 South Ninth Street within the city of St. Helens and directing that that notice to abate the nuisance be posted on said premises.
I move we adopt resolution number 1932 as read.
Second?
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve resolution 1932. Any discussion on it? If we will open the pictures, it needs to be cleaned up. So, Council President Morton?
Aye.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
The nominee as well. Approved and authorized for signature. Two, amendment number two to IGA with Columbia City for water filtration discharge. Three, second amendment to license permit to enter premises with Port of Portland for tide gauge stationed at city dock. And four, contract payment.
I approve. I move that we approve and authorize for signature items two and four on agenda as read.
Second?
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve items two through four.
No, two and four.
Two through four.
No, well, okay.
As read.
That's what I thought I heard. Two through four?
I thought and four. Well, we got a discussion. We'll catch it there.
Okay.
Okay, discussion.
If you look at the map, the line goes through a number of properties they're outlining that looks like it's the county property. The next question is, it says the city docks. Are they the city docks or the maritime docks? Or the marine docks by the state?
Well, they are the city dock.
They are. They are owned by the city, okay. Well, I have a real question about the line drawn basically through county buildings and county parking lots.
Could you give us an example?
If you take a look at the map, you'll see that it has a strange. Here's this map here. It cuts, here's the docks. You see where First Street is, the rural road, and then it cuts directly through here. This is an old map, by the way, but the county building sits right here. And now the building, the annex, is right there. I would expect there to be a right angle turn for that line to go through there. And do we have the right to say good things about county property?
Well, this is an old map and this is an old person looking at an old map, so it makes perfect sense to me.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about. Because that area was filled in in the late 60s.
Well, what do you want?
I just want that map to be corrected. You know, we got, getting the wire there is not the problem. It's getting the map corrected.
If there's a. So. If there's a problem with the map or the plot or anything like that, we can have our city planner quickly review it. If there's a problem, it needs to come back to us then. So if there is no problem, my motion stands.
Well, the other question is, the location of where the tide gauge was when that map was was that Mayville Lighthouse back there, not the new high-tech middle building. Because the old tide gauge at this time used to be in there.
If there, if there is a problem, I'll have, I don't know if that. We threw an amend, amendment or anything, but Jacob could just look at it and if there's a problem, then we can resend this motion and he could come down and, at our next meeting or an email, tell us that it isn't possible, but it seems to me everything's okay. So if it is okay, I stand by my motion.
You're questioning Council Topaz. You're questioning whether or not the dock is on city property or county property.
And the line drew across the ground is.
I know, I understand that lines can be inaccurate and fixed. And if that's something that needs to be fixed, as Council Morton says, then that would go, you know, that's not for us to fix, but if it's our understanding that this is on city property, then I think we go ahead and.
Well, we got, the other problem is right now the tide gauges lie on the ground. They are not attached to the docks. They were attached way back when, when the equipment was in the moral lighthouse. And there's been some fiscal changes and the age of this map is where the problem is. That's what.
Well, I don't think we can rely on old maps and I would think that the amendment has been made in the light of our understanding of what the current property lines are.
Yeah, I'd like to go forward with it unless proven otherwise. If it's proven otherwise, we can look at it from our city planner. Is that okay?
I would like to have it excluded and have a city plan before we have to change what we said here. I'm willing to change it, but I don't think we should do it with the document here.
Why?
Because the document's wrong. That's, that's, that map is supposedly a legal document.
I, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense. You're just telling us that the map's wrong and that's what we have in front of us to go by. I mean, I think we can go by it. And then if it is wrong, our city planner can come down here and rectify the situation for us next time. This is not time sensitive. We don't have to rush through and do anything now.
So that's why I would not pass it now. I'll pass the other two, but not that one.
Okay.
Because I don't want to do, come back and have to correct.
My motion stands.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other further discussion? Okay, Council President Morton?
Aye.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
The nominee as well. Motion passes. Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance and I, and John said he would check with Jacob to make sure that that's all.
One of the recitals that talks about the granters, the granters docks, which are, access to the granters docks which are located in Columbia. Could be that, I'm doing one of these agreements as well.
Right, consent agenda for acceptance. Five, Parks and Trails Commission minutes dated July 12, 2021. Library Board Minutes dated July 12, 2021. Non-commissional minutes dated July 13, 2021.
I make a motion that we accept all the agenda of minutes. Items five, six, and seven.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda for five, six, seven. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
The nominee as well. Consent agenda for approval. Eight ammo facility licenses and nine accounts payable bills.
I move that we approve consent agenda for approval items eight through nine.
Second?
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve consent agenda for approval eight and nine.
Aye.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
The nominee as well. In our work session items, we had the, three things. We had the chamber discussion on that. That would be the first one.
There's one that carried forward from the last.
Yeah, that's part of the three.
So, you know, again, we did donate significant amount of monies to them. I think $12, $13, $14 about three years ago for an upgrade on to their building. And as vitally important as a full-time person is for visitor center, I did not see a lot of other cities or counties or people stepping up and I'm kind of discouraged. Got somebody that followed, I was hoping somebody to follow suit and kind of help out. And that did not happen at that point in time.
The other thing that happened, we had a PR program. We had a lot of people help put the paint and some of that stuff down. We did more than just send money.
So that's a little bit of history for you two is that we did, and we did a lot of work up there as far as, you know, making it ready for, make it kind of like a, not a maker's space, but you can go bring your business up there and do a trial run for six months and nothing.
Well, the park, remember the parks grew and cut a lot of that crappy junk around it to pretty empty outside, too. The city put, you know, manpower into that, too.
What were they asking for?
They were asking for us to pay for a full-time visitor center at $20 an hour and property tax. And I do believe was the ask.
At least a.
Annual funding for a full-time visitor center office coordinator at 15 to 20 an hour and annual facility maintenance fee, property taxes.
Well, what was the, did they ever go over the maximum amount or the minimum amount that they were asking for? I mean, this, they didn't tell me a whole lot.
They didn't really tell us the hard number.
No, and we didn't, and we didn't ask. We could have, could have asked. And I think maybe one reason is I'm, my takeaway, Council Morton, is that I think we want to support and promote, but right now at this point, in a budget year where we've committed that we don't have discretionary funds or available funds to support this, that's something certainly we could encourage as the next budget process is coming up. If they wanted to approach, we would ask any organization or group of citizens to involve themselves in the process to look at the next fiscal year, but I, I, I don't see a contribution other than what we have through our membership this fiscal year.
What was the ask on the grant application? Because they, they.
Oh, that was.
That was the HVAC. They brought it in.
15,000.
How much?
15,000.
I, I agree. I mean, I feel like we've kind of invested into two other programs right now that are doing very similar things for community. So they kind of came in a little late after we've already kind of made promises to other places. And I also personally feel like the county should step up to help that out since they represent the whole county, not just, you know.
Yeah, wouldn't it be nice if, not nice, that's a, that's a kind of erroneous term, but wouldn't it be more effective if people, individuals and committees and of concern were asking the council for monetary help that they're all in here pretty much at the same time? And we can go over their applications and we can see what they've got and we can divvy it up appropriately. And so when this comes in after, you know, after the bulk of that was done, then it's really hard for us to kind of go back and say, yeah, yes, and it's. I just, I don't, I don't see how we can come up with funds and, and there's no, there's no ask here for an amount. It's just like visitor's center office coordinator, 15 to 20 dollars an hour. And so does that mean that that person could spend 40 hours a week, 50 hours a week, 20 hours a week? What does that mean? And so I just think I have to say no on this.
You know, and I wouldn't be opposed on our next go-around because we have every six months of giving them $1,000 for. They mentioned a grant writer. I think that's the area they need to actually pursue.
I thought like they were going to fund their own grant money.
Yes, but obviously they don't have a lot of money. I don't think they have as much. To get a good grant writer, they cost money if you want to get one, but they, they earn.
Mayor, aren't we a member of that also? Don't we pay as a membership fee something? So it isn't, you know, this is extra.
Yeah, of course. They're asking us.
So I think too, it'd be good if we could somehow, I don't know how the communication would be, because it is the South County Chamber of Commerce. It's not the St. Helens Chamber of Commerce. That if, even though it's located here in St. Helens, we would want some kind of understanding where Scapus and Vernonia and the county are in that. So that would also be able to provide some kind of figure because I don't think, yeah, we as a city need to put the entire bill for what is a South County entity.
And with that, we have to look at the possibility of them taking down the visitor sign. So what does that mean for us?
Well, I mean, it means a little bit of, you know, old school people don't look on their phones for information. They look to the chambers. They stop by and that's where you get your information. And that's why chambers are, are, you know, vitally important as they have that.
Tell you what, I'll take that to Kiwanis and see if the volunteers can man that for, for certain times, possibly weekend mornings or whatever. I'll take that proposal to them as well so that they know about it. Other service groups, I'm not quite certain. Lions might look at it. Rotary could look at it, but it's more international oriented. But things like this, you know, if the chamber needs help, they need, they need help. They need volunteers to step forward. So there, there could be a situation like that. I'll reach out also to the individual groups that are asking for those monetary funds and suggest possibly volunteers stepping up from service groups especially.
Doug, in a lot of chambers that I've been familiar with in other states, they have like a welcome wagon. New family arrives in town and the welcome wagon from the chamber comes out and says, hey, these are the people who's down. We give them a bunch of gifts and so on. Shouldn't the, in this particular case, the people selling real estate, is there a?
I would think the members of the, of the association and of the group could share in that responsibility, I would think.
Yeah, I just wonder if there was a real estate agency group in town.
Yeah, there would be one.
As compared to just.
Yeah.
So I think maybe we ought to ask them to give us a list of the people they're talking to and maybe suggest some of the other people they ought to talk to before they come back.
Let's see where this goes.
So this picture is so old on the front of this that they're doing the roaring twenties. The picture is so old, it's two-way street. Set up two, one-way in, it's two-way and pretty cool. So I will make a pledge to them Saturday, September 18th, 1:00 to 7:00 PM. The chamber building is 100 years old. It used to be an old train station. And nobody itself is 100. And it's coming back to the roaring twenties is the theme. And yes, I will be, instead of would, be dressed up in something roaring twenties. So.
Well, I see.
We have to be a bootlegger.
I see a hiccup here. I see a 49 Hudson and a 51 Dang. There's no twenties vehicles in it.
And we do support the chamber. We're talking, we did talk in our discussion earlier, you know, of course, about Main Street and how they cannot utilize Main Street because of being a 5013C and they're very much different. There was some conflicting, conflict there. So anyhow, okay, so. I think what, if you could, staff could just write a letter, tell them that we regret that. We can't help them out. That we, we hope they wouldn't utilize the 12 or 15,000 what we gave them three years ago as the city did donate and in their ask to the county or maybe the city of Scapus for even if it's not that much, some, that they utilize that, that the city did step up and do a huge remodel and help us out with sinks and all kinds of stuff, big ADA bathrooms. I forget what all, what it was, but it was a lot. So if you could just send some type of letter to them, notification, okay?
Kathy, could you forward the names to me of the individuals who are here testifying? I'm looking on the agenda. Always.
They're on, they're on the other side. They're right here.
I, I got it.
Okay, so our next one was.
Item number two is actually a.
Item number two is actually a, uh, item from last meeting. There was an item on the agenda for.
Oh, approval.
Emery and Sons Construction Group for twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents. That was not approved. And so we'd like to see if the city council is willing to approve that payment now.
Yeah, would you like to go ahead and talk on that, Doug?
Say that again. I was reading.
That's okay. So at the previous meeting, uh, there was a discussion about one of the contract payments for Emery Sons and Construction Company.
Oh.
Seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, forty-five cents. And so that was not approved at the meeting. And so we are looking for the city council to approve that payment.
Okay, and I made, I think I made X, X.
Sorry, I got it.
Good one. Why, why? When do you catch, when do you catch fish?
I think there's a microphone up there.
So I think I explained to council members that individually that there really was not an overreach on that. And so after talking to Mohammed, uh, about that issue, that it was an overlap of him coming in and assuming, uh, a job that was almost done by the former Public Works Director. So that there was this confusion on what was done and what was paid and all of that. So I did go to the former Public Works interim director and ask her what the issue was. And she said, for all contracts, there is a five percent, uh, overreach fee. So that in case something does go over, there's that five percent cushion. And so what was suggested to me was this came in under the contract bid and it was slightly under. But there was this payment of, that was not an overage. It was a, just a payment due to the, uh, construction company. If that makes sense, it was a, it was explained to me in really lengthy terms, but it's, it made sense to me. So, uh, that's been policy in Public Works for these huge projects to put a five percent cushion on the contracts in case there is overage of some sort. Okay, so, uh, I think it was explained to me. I did go to Mohammed and talk about it and get clarification on it. He okayed it. And I did go to the engineer and Sue Nelson and she okayed it. So it was, it's, it's fine with me. I just wanted a clear understanding of what that meant and, and because, what was that? Thirty thousand dollars? That's a lot of money. And so I wanted to understand why that was, I thought for sure it was an overage and I wanted accountability on it. That's what I found out. So I'm okay with it.
Look, as I also heard, it was, work was done. It was the description of what work didn't get described that had to get done, something like that.
I, yeah, I, they didn't go there with me, so if they went there with you.
So, but the work was done. It was just the way.
Yeah, the terminology is retainage. So it.
What's that?
The terminology is retainage. When every payment we make, contractor, the city retains five percent of that until the work's done and then they cross check to make sure the project gets done completely. And this is a release of that retainage at the end, so that payment.
So retainage fee. So I could make a motion to, uh, pay that contract payment that was studied and found very acceptable.
Second.
Do we need to name, that we need to name the, the company in the motion?
Yeah, that would be perfect. Just for future clarification if it ever comes up. Uh, the company's name is Emery Suns, Emery and Sons Construction.
Emery and Sons?
Emery.
Emery and Sons. Emery and Sons Construction, uh, payment in full as requested. And I believe item two in our last session.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just wondering because we did have an original motion and then a second.
Yes, so should we vote on that first one?
Sorry.
I see where you're going. So we're gonna go with the first motion. Council President Morton.
No.
Can I, Topaz?
Aye.
Uh, Chilton?
Aye.
Berkeley?
No.
I'm a no. And now there's been a motion made and seconded to, uh, pay, make a payment to Emery and Son in full. Uh, that was described by staff. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
And I, I as well.
Thank you for putting up with me on that one. I appreciate it.
We have one more.
Uh, the Police Public Safety Fund, the dollar amount that you would just like to direct staff to come back to our resolution.
Yes, so there was much discussion in this in our earlier work session and that, uh, the three dollars a month is what we looked at. And because of, um, it would be the fiscally responsible way, the, the one that would be fiscally responsible for is not for budget purposes. And it just made sense. Now, when we originally started this, I will state that we campaigned six to eleven dollars. That's correct. We found every little bit of money. We took, uh, um, the marijuana fee money, which, and the reason it changed from two to three is because of the marijuana tax that the state would hold the three percent. Now she's taking a bigger chunk for measure one-ten, right? So she is taking a hundred and sixty thousand of the two-hundred-and-thirty we were getting. So we're not, we're, that's our short call. So that's why we are pushing it up to three now because our governor decided to take some of our tax, marijuana tax money and use it for.
Well, that would've been the legislature he signed up.
Yeah. At this point, hey, she's the governor. I get, I get, my fingerprint is at the mayor too, so, uh, you know, I get it. You know, you guys, we adopt, sometimes I'm against and we adopt it, you know, so. Um, I, I think three is the, it's a good, good place to be because we don't have to come back.
Mister Mayor, I think as we talk about this, uh, legally, way down the line, if we need extra, we can add to this. This is not final forever. As long as that's made clear, no problem.
Yep, that was clear. Yep, three dollars. Yeah, Council President Morton.
No, they, we got a motion.
Sorry, does this, do we just need to, you just need?
Where's the direction?
Direction or do we?
He wants an official because he wants to make sure that.
Yeah, it's nice to have a motion just because it's official.
It is just a direction, huh?
Correct. Consensus would be.
So, yes, a consensus is all we need. So I'm, I'm just gonna call Council President Morton.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I haven't heard a, a motion in the.
Uh, just give a census. It doesn't really have to be a motion.
Yeah, we just talked.
Okay, there's not have to be a motion.
Because it's a direction.
Just because this isn't a final payment or anything and you're directing staff to come back to you with a resolution.
But he wants the direction from the.
That's it.
Council Topaz?
Aye.
Council Chilton?
Aye.
Council Berkeley?
Aye.
And I as well. Okay, so, uh, what do I have to report on? Yes, I did make it over to Sand Island. It's last weekend. It was, uh, went over camping actually Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. And it was good. Wednesday and Thursday were hotter than a biscuit. I'll tell you that, that shit wasn't even comfortable over there on the island at night. But, uh, so up there, of course, I planned this months, months ago and Sand Island, they were over there, they're already starting to prep for the, uh, uh, sand building contest. And it was, I'll tell you what, I was literally blown away what they started to sculpt uh, late Thursday afternoon into Friday and finish it up Friday. The four big ones over there. If you have a chance to ride the ferry for free over there, do it. I, I recommend it. And then Saturday came along and they did the competition from ten to two. And there was a ton of, ton of people coming in over from that ferry. Uh, I met three people from Arizona uh, that ended up here. They came in, flew into Seattle, three friends and they randomly do this stuff, right? Fly into Seattle, they went clear down to Tillamook and went to the cheese factory. They ended up at Multnomah Falls. They were gonna try to get in a motel room in Portland and something happened where it was this thing. And they heard about this sand council competition and they ended up riding the ferry over to Sand Island. Yes! And it was just, and they told me this whole lot, big story and I, I was just blown away. And they didn't know who I was. I was just talking to them. I was just blown away about how, um, you know, and they were absolutely fell in love with it. They are gonna be back to camp at Sand Island. You know, they're just, uh, totally enjoyed the very experience of there. So, um, yeah, it was, um, a good thing. Uh, Citizens Day was a blast. I had fun with the council. It was a good day. It was just, um, a good flow there and very good atmosphere with good music. The musician, Don, was the, the main guy that set us up. Uh, we'll play for free again next year if we like him to. And that was very generous of them to do that, the decades, yeah.
No incidents?
No incidences, no. It was, uh, you know, kids were playing on that playground structure. If you go down there, they're, they're always on that. That, that thing's a hit, so, uh, it was nice having the motor assist people out there. Thank you to all the vendors that, that donated, you know? And, uh, I think we'll have something down the road with motor assist again is what, uh, we're shooting for. So that'll be a little bit later date, next month sometime. And just, uh, yeah, it was a good time. I really enjoyed myself with you guys that day, so. Uh, we were all kind of all over the place, but, uh, that's the, the beauty of it, you know? And, uh, yeah, that's all I have to report. Council President Morton?
Yeah, I'm ready. Traditionally, one of the issues of making decisions is, uh, public testimony and, uh, public testimony can come in various forms and written, uh, in many senses, and emails. If emails are forwarded and put into the record, uh, anything that goes into the record. And, um, since we've been talking about tourism and the, uh, issue of, uh, going out for, uh, an R F P and all of a sudden a decision was made, uh, our council chambers for, uh, two weeks is filled up. And we've gotten, uh, no support on our decision. We've got all one hundred percent, as I recall, in the, uh, in the testimonies. Why did you do this? Yeah, it's wrong. So, uh, as president of the council, uh, I resp- I have to respond to that. And especially when people come up to me and ask me that on the street. I have been asked that on the street numerous, numerous, numerous times. Go over running dogs and that seems to be the big, the big issue. People who, they recognize me, they'll come out and ask, what's going on with tourism? Why did you do that? Are you guys insane? What's happening? Those kinds of things. And they're hard for me to reconcile. All I said, you know, my deal is, is that it's a council decision. It isn't my decision. Uh, I, I, I didn't support it and whatever. But it continues. But here's a caveat on everything. I didn't support it for so many reasons because I've seen how tourism had and the potential of tourism what it can do for the city. And, uh, I haven't seen that many glitches in, uh, in our, in our tourism events. And if they have, they've been rectified the next year. It's an annual kind of thing. And I think we have, uh, a phenomenal director that is, uh, follows through, uh, very committed. And, uh, I think upfront, so anyway, I personally, I don't, I don't see a problem with it. But here's what I see a problem with is that when I heard, when I hear the words and I've heard this three times, recall. And I, that kind of, that kind of sends shivers up my back. I'm going, what? And I, and I go, this doesn't sound right. I've been a victim of recall. Uh, my first, my first, uh, term, um, due to our decisions on, uh, the, uh, charter review. And, uh, was somewhat outspoken about that. And, uh, another counselor was, since we both got a recall petition going. It didn't go anywhere, but it didn't feel good. It didn't feel good at all. And, uh, the mayor at that time said, you know, this is pretty nasty, uh, what's going on. And he had talks with both, uh, Mr. Barlow and myself, as did the president of the council at that time. So I just know that it really shook things up a whole lot. What it really did was it challenged the staff to a point where they, you know, that didn't challenge it, but I think this is challenging the staff. This, uh, going out for a new request for proposal at this time is a huge challenge for these folks. They have a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of things going. We have, uh, so much on the plate that to drop a bomb on, uh, and especially this person right over here who has to foresee, okay, what are we going to be doing for, with this request for proposal? The council has to be involved and the council has to have some time to figure out what we want. If there's going to be a change and we are going to start all over, oh my heavens, uh, this is a lot of work to do. So I don't know how to go about this because I think Jessica had, when she made that motion, had the, you know, her best interest forward, which she believes in, you know, and I respect that. I respect you going forward with that motion. Uh, I respect the council for, um, uh, voting and, uh, I do respect the decision. I respect the whole process. It isn't that that I'm having. I'm just asking, maybe we'd better take a second look. I would really like to go back and I think the best way to take a second look is to rescind the motion. Uh, and then we can have a discussion. And so I think that would be the best way. The, another way is to amend the motion and give an extension on that motion for a timely, uh, period. And I can see more of a year rather than next week or whatever. I could see, uh, it's gonna take a lot of time for us to get together. It's going to take a lot of time for the staff to get together. And I think that we've gotta look at that, well, we gotta look at the motion. I think it was just too much of a bomb for everyone to digest at one time. So that, I, that's in my report. I'm not certain what my motion is going to be. But wherever it is, I would like someone to second it and then we can have a discussion. And then we can go forward with a meaningful discussion, uh, at this time. Okay, so with that, uh, if, if anyone wants to advise me, my motion, they said, I still have the floor. This is still my report. Can I have any input? This is still my report. Can I have any input from the council?
Yeah, I move that we rescind, what, what, what was, uh, that we rescind the date, whatever, what was the date we did this? I move to rescind the July your, uh, request to staff to, uh. So, uh, yeah, I, I, I move that we. And he, he's asking for a.
Yeah.
And we can have a discussion on it, so I'm not.
It's in my decision, my report.
I move that we rescind the direction, uh, the, the, I move that we rescind the direction given to city staff to given to city staff to uh, to, um.
Develop an RFP.
Develop, thank you, Kat. Develop an RFP for tourism. And that we rescind the, what was that meaning? The July?
At last meeting, two meetings ago.
The, the, I move that we rescind the July direction, the direction given in July to city staff to develop an RFP.
I hear you. Okay. Any other, I've asked the staff, I asked the council to, to give me feedback and I'm still in my report.
Well, if we do, if, if that's the mo, I mean, if you asked for the motion, make you the motion second, then I think we would have, we would then have discussion after that was.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna make a motion or not, but I want to know what, what, what the deal is for the motion, okay? I'm talking about.
So you're.
What's that?
I thought you just said a motion. I thought you were in the second.
I didn't make a motion.
No, I, he was asking, I, I.
Well, I'm asking for your opinions of what to do in this discussion with the motion. So I'm foregoing my motion of rescinding this, but if I didn't want it, it sounds like I, I should do that according to Pat.
No, I just tried to clarify. And so I, I would, so if you're asking for response to what you're saying, I'm happy to give that. Right? Give that right now.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So I, 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 I'm just saying, I wanted to do that right now.
Okay.
I thought it was still, he still had the floor, not you.
Okay.
He was, I understood Counsel Morton was inviting us to respond to his. And I began that response, my response, Counsel.
Now can I make a response?
So, uh, I'm gonna just interject here because I'm mayor, because I know this. Is that he is actually trying to respond still to Doug's comments.
Right.
So that's what you're trying to say, so just give him just a minute.
That's my turn.
Yeah, because I could hear what Doug was saying.
So, since that last meeting, or not that last meeting, that meeting where we, we had that. I had a meeting last week with Tina. I went back and I reviewed, uh, the origin of the April tourism meeting. Um, and I did see that at the April tourism meeting, we did in fact give direction for a contract. Uh, to review the contract. I also recall that we had originally asked, uh, Mr. Walsh to come back in May with something. But that didn't happen and it didn't happen, I think, for a number of very good reasons. If we recall, there was a lot of other things going on that assumed our attention in May. Also though, I would have to say that from the very beginning at that April meeting, where it was an honest attempt, in my intent and the way I understood, just, uh, Counsel Chilton, to have a discussion about tourism. But the main part somehow, that public comment at that meeting was all turned towards that suddenly we wanted to get rid of Tina. And I, at that time stated, I don't know where that came from. And there was another meeting a couple months later where just that. And I have to confess to a lot of, uh, you know, fight or flight, where I still don't understand. It had never been my intent to just end the contract and find somebody and start fresh. I wanted the dialogue. That dialogue never really happened. And then, so then, because of any other things we were dealing with. Again, I want to make sure I'm not blaming, uh, John for not coming back to us in May because we were just consumed with stuff. So time goes on. We get some additional, uh, comment and I'm just trying to add, find out the questions. My bottom line here on this, then, Counsel Morton, as I have been reflecting on it. And I do understand, I did support and I voted for Counsel Chilton's uh, because I frankly, in this, the heat of whatever, forgot that our original request had been for a contract. Um, not an RFP. And I don't, I don't, Counsel Chilton can speak for herself if she recalls that or not. And in view, and then my understanding of what, uh, John has been doing when I've talked to him, is coming up with several options that they can present to us. Be that just a revised contract, be that an RFP, uh, whatever. I am perfectly content to do that. To go back to where we were in April, where our original request had been for a revision of the contract to take into account the new realities of we're not doing the Fourth of July and things like that. And, uh, I had had my conversation with Tina on, on Thursday, which seemed, as I came away with that, that talk, that we seem to be on the same page is what we want in terms of, uh, very, Tina's very clear. She works for the interests of the city and is, you know, work is, that, um, to work for, for the city. And so that as we look at a contract, if we are mainly interested in accountability, counting, you know, having this information, more clarity of process. My understanding is that we are on the same page for this kind of thing. Tina, is that kind of correct? I mean, that we looking, that we're kind of on the same page. So that is where I am then on this is, um, at this point in time. I don't know why we couldn't go back to our original position in April.
Thank you for that input.
Uh, in, in April and, uh, move forward then.
Anyone else?
Can I get going? Back in, uh, 2019, in the, for an end of the year, I mentioned about Tina's contract. They, I was told it was automatically renewed at that moment, but in July we could review it. And, uh, the council told me at that time we would review it in July and that never happened. I put in a request for an RFP in, uh, December and there was no backing. I have gotten a number of people from our community who would like to see other people be approached or have a chance at the position as compared to a continuing contract that nobody else can get in. Now, use the business that we're too busy, we couldn't do it. It's not businesslike. We have this mantra, okay, we may not like it, but that's what we're gonna do. What are we gonna do? Just keep giving excuses while we're not doing it? Could there be someone better than Tina? Yes. Could there be, could Tina be better than anybody else? Yes. But we need to have the test. And just making believe that it's great enough is not really an answer, but we're not following what the council had agreed to do. This is going on the third time. We, we don't have any credibility if we keep doing this. We can always say we've got too much, we're too busy, the staff's this, the staff's that. After three times, it's time for the staff to make. We also need, as we've discussed and I think everybody agreed on, a better description of what the job ought to be. And you can't do that with the old contract. You need a new contract. And that requires an RFP because then the whole thing is different. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I just make a real quick response?
Doug's, Doug's got the floor.
Doug, can I just speak about that? Because part of what, in my mind is having not recalled what we decided in April. When Counsel Chilton brought up the RFP, I was confusion in my mind or it was not clear. I'm thinking, do we have that in order to redo the contract? Did that require an RFP? It does not. So it, it does not. We can simply do a revision of the contract without an RFP. Is my understanding, as I believe, uh, as I believe that we can simply, if we do that. But again, staff is going to present us with a number of options to consider.
Still my report and I would like to call on Mr. Walsh to, uh, talk about some alternatives of, uh, directions that we can go at this time, if you would like to.
Sure. Um, so I, I think that the reasons for an RFP were things like Counsel Topaz mentioning an audit. Some of the deliverables that you, you wanted to see as far as reports, as far as, uh, events, what you want to see, what you want to see. Um, the big piece being aligning the events budget with the fiscal year so that we don't have this constant issue of overlap and, you know, borrowing money back and forth. So the economics kind of work within the city's framework. And that, those are the, all things that are possible and that detail that we're working on to, uh, meet that test of that contractor, employer relationship, making, keeping that separation where she's not, doesn't become employee.
Exactly.
Employee of the city, but she will, we also get the information that we need. And, uh, in order to feel comfortable as far as, you know, inventory and revenue and expenditures and that, all that flow of information that seems to be important. That, that's the risk in opening up an RFP or Q or for those kinds of services is that, you know, the last time it cost us more money and, uh, it could be more. Even during, some, they came in some, there was people that came in way low that were completely unqualified to do it and, uh.
And it was definitely clear.
It was, yeah.
In the application process.
One thing an RFP does though, it definitely says, this is the criteria that has to be met. And if we say, well, we were gonna change the contract later down the road, it, they get too busy and it doesn't get changed. An RFP, at least in the beginning, gives you the specific things that have got to be done and fulfilled to get a candidate in it.
But we don't know what those are.
Why would you adding job qualifications to someone who's already in the position?
Say that.
Why would you add like job qualifications and duties to someone who's already in the position and then expect them to just do it? You would revamp the job, get the job back out there and tell the person, okay, now here's the job as it sits and this is what we're expecting of you. That's a clean way to do that, to handle it professionally.
Well, uh, so, um, John, are you done? Because it's Doug's floor.
Yeah, I think so. Those are the high levels, yeah.
And I just want, I, I think for me, it took the history lesson when I came in. And I was like, what the heck? What is this a big deal, right? Because I came in wounded this RFP process. And, uh, at that point in time, I was educated that we had been through five different people in like, I don't know, maybe a little over 10 years. Like every two years, there was a new person that was in charge. I think to narrow it down to a certain set of things is narrow minded when people come up with ideas as far as. The ferry, the ferry festival was a blowout. I didn't like it. I didn't get it. I didn't think it was that great. The sand castles, one run, boom. Now, if that was not part of the job description, it would have never happened. So I, I, because I'm, I'm kind of hearing what you're saying and I'm hearing you have a set amount of things, but I mean, no, that.
That's a little bit special.
So a friend of mine who's big into kayaks says, this is awesome. Texted me, this is awesome. I could see next year kayak races around to add to this event. Kayak races around the island. And there's a lot of kayakers out there nowadays. It could happen. So sand castles with kayaks racing around and you got this, you know, this ad, keep adding to it and make it grow. And, uh, yeah, they go, I went to take a walk on the island and I was surprised by the treat that we found over here. That was just, uh, this morning. And we're still staying. So I, I think part of it is just, I just want to make sure that there's also history, a, a history lesson with tourism that needs to be taken in consideration. And you could ask people, um, in the community about how it, it, yeah, it just kept flopping. And, uh, um, you know, ask Bob Charlesberry, who ended up 13 nights portion of things and the foundation and how it was just Bob at the end. One of the proposals in the RFP process was, I don't even live here, but I'm gonna strictly, it was lowball. I'm strictly gonna run it all on volunteers. Huh, huh, was gonna run it all on volunteers. I was like, holy cow, we threw that one out right away. We're like, yeah, right. We know that ain't gonna happen. They never even did their homework.
So Jessica, you got anything else to give to me?
I, I am not changing my thoughts on it. That's just for now.
Right.
It's not gonna be pushed around and stronger.
And I need to hear one more thing from, uh, our city manager. If we do come into a consensus of, of looking at tourism and defining what it is, what we want to do, how much flexibility we're going to give the tourism director, with all these kind of parameters that seem to be confusing to, uh, individuals. Uh, Mr. Walsh, can you come back to the council at some time with some staff recommendations on what you feel would be important and how we could best get through this? Uh, with whatever, bringing someone in to help facilitate a meeting. A meeting that doesn't get convoluted by, uh, a public testimony, a meeting with the council and with staff to iron this one out. It could be a special meeting or whatever. And with that, if you could do that, uh, what would be the time limitation? Would you need six months? Would you need, uh, how much time for us to get those talks together? And then if we decide we need an RFP, then if we decide what we're, uh, what we need to do, then so be it. Is that, could you do something like that?
Well, I mentioned in my report this afternoon that we're working to align, to meet the council's needs with the contractors' needs and their expectations, the city's role, the contractor's role. And that, you know, with latest mid-December, whether you do an RFP or not, we're still gonna have that discussion and try to align those expectations. But it's really important to understand what, what events do you want to do? What do you not want to do? What, you know, where do you want to go with budget? What do you want to require of the contractor? What is the city willing to do to support the contractor? And just can maintain that, uh, your expectations of reporting and, you know, all those deliverables and things of that nature. So if, on either path, we are still looking at creating that alignment of what we want out of the future tourism.
Well, I know that, I know for myself that there's been stuff purchased for the store lightly on the first year. The second year fairly decent this year. Part of what we're going with, with the budget is Halloween town store is stocked and ready. Uh, probably is what I'm guessing a lot of that was, um, it's ready to go for October. So that also is something that needs to be, I mean, there's a lot of movie parks too. There's also a store aspect of it too.
You've been in the store? You've been in it?
Yeah.
Rick? Mr. Mayor? A couple of years ago, we also spent $72,000 in luminate. And this was something that never happened, but we spent the money on. Uh, I like John's, uh, idea that at one point, matching the budget time, we basically reassign the projects that we want tourism to have as compared to just continuously going with no, you know, double check port.
So. We spent the money on that.
So luminate.
We spent $72,000 in luminate and we can't get it back because the company's out of Nevada.
Luminate was here and ready to set up and, and COVID started.
Yeah, so, so, uh, sorry. So, so, Carla, I don't know if you, if you wanted to follow through with the motion or if you believe that.
or if you believe that.
Yes, I do want to make a motion.
In our consensus, our consensus is that we just.
I want to make a motion and then we can vote on it. Okay, are you ready? Anything else? Okay, I'd like to motion to rescind the, rescind the existing motion about getting an RF, an RFP on the, on tourism. And men, and I just rescind it at this point and allow our city manager slash administrator to come back with us with scenarios that we can work through this so that we all have an understanding, a better understanding of what tourism is and how we can best understand it as a council.
Question, does that mean we end what we have now? We follow with what John comes or does we just, if he doesn't come, do we just continue?
We have to have, we have to have a second.
John, or directing John to come back to us and up with, with scenarios of what, what we can do. We could have a, the way we could do that, we could have a meeting with, and I just went over that not too long ago. We could have a meeting just with the council and, and staff and, and work it out at that time.
Remember.
We need some work, don't we?
Well, that's true, but we have a continuing contract right now.
We have a continuing contract and to pull that contract out for right now, as Halloween Town and the Festival of Lights and all of that is just around the corner is absurd to me.
Yeah, we got, we can put a time on that.
So.
But we want to say that it's going to, that contract is going to drop in.
Do you mean a lot? No, and there hasn't been a second.
And, you know.
Yeah, so that was my motion, okay? And, and that's it in a nutshell. Ask John to come back with, with, with a scenario, different scenarios of what we can, strategies of which direction we can go. And then this entire council get together and talk about those strategies and work out future contracts, work out issues that give our tourism director flexibility in his or her operations to work through.
So, so, yeah, yeah.
That's my. We got, we hear what Kathy, what do you have down as the motion for it? Because if I.
If you run it down and.
That's not the motion that Doug made.
I know.
That our council will more.
Okay, make a motion to rescind our existing motion that happened in July about getting a RFP for tourism.
I will second that.
Okay, motion, then maybe a secondly, discussion.
Yes. So my discussion is this, the basis I'm making my decision on is going back to what our original direction had been at the April meeting. And so that is what I'm basing my decision to rescind the call for the RFP because we had originally asked for re, revising the contract. And whatever the circumstances were that happened between then and now, that would be the basis for my, my vote, I would vote to rescind the July direction because our April direction focused on the contract rather than the RFP.
And so as a matter of procedure, I make this motion and it passes, then you still have an opportunity for a motion, you have an opportunity for a motion, you have an opportunity for a motion. So there's, it's not a, it's something that can be followed up on, okay?
We're going to have a short meeting tonight, I promised you guys.
Okay, so, yeah, let's get on with it then.
Any other discussions? I, so I would just like to state that for myself, that, yeah, there's many moving parts to tourism that I think U2C does a wonderful job. I personally witnessed a small minority out there who are offended and easily sometimes offended and that's just unfortunate that to have a bone to pick because they got offended and don't even know who I am. And there are personal agendas and I do not answer to any group or individual as my mantra reads. And I think with what, everything that's going on in our city, 13 nights to Halloween Town to Sand Island, to a number of just even touching base with the businesses and sponsorship and asking them how their, their businesses are doing throughout these events and making sure that there's communication, I think, I think that's a good job personally, me. Now, you know, they can say whatever they want to say about me, I'm a gotick skin tail and they're going to say it. But they, the certain few have been constant the entire time. And that is a history lesson that you should be familiar with. So I'm bigger than many of these or even going after these individuals because I have more important things to do to serve all citizens. We have a city of 14,000 people. We have to deliver police services to, sewer water. We have to make sure all the streets are handicap accessible, sidewalks to, to a number of things. And all that we have to sit, come in here and set policy and look at the redevelopment of waterfront, industrial property, central waterfront. So that all being said is that some people are just selfish, self-centered enough to try to get what they want. And it doesn't matter what it actually does because they have a bone to pick. We've all seen those people out there in general. It just happens. So for me, I have to pray for them, stay in love and say, you know, I hear you. And I'll be the first one to tell them sometimes, I don't think it fits. They don't like that. But I'm going to be honest to you, my core values. So.
That actually cuts both ways, but okay.
It absolutely does. It absolutely does. So, you know, I'm not out here to try to manipulate anybody. I do think for myself, I see things, I step back from situations and I look through the whole, and if I'm, if I'm a little bit cloudy, I ask information of some pretty good mentors in this community because I know I don't always have the answers. That's right. I'm driven by citizens, so that's why I signed up to do this. So I am going to be for it.
Let's vote.
Yes. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
Counselor Berkeley?
Aye.
Counselor Chilton?
I'm a no because I do not respond to bullying and antagonizing to get your way. Cowardly, very cowardly.
And I will agree.
And I will not back down.
I will agree that there was some comments made about Counselor Chilton that I apologize and I should have corrected.
Bullying.
Yeah, yeah.
And continue to happen.
So I want to make amends, I want to make amends to you because I should have corrected that in the meeting, okay? I want to publicly make amends to you for that. Counselor Chilton?
I appreciate it, but we just can't condone it any further.
Yes, yep.
It happens every meeting and not just to me, to everybody.
Tonight, tonight it didn't.
Staff.
It was an opinions, it was not, yes, so tonight it didn't. So my commitment to you, the entire council, and I am a a, just so you know, the motion did pass.
What is the motion, I mean, what is the count?
It's three to two.
Thank you.
Yes. My commitment to this council is to, we are respectful to each other for the most part and we always come back together and we're able to do our work. And it's important for me that the citizens show up, get testimony that they at least are respectful. They can get their point across without being disrespectful.
Yes.
Very easy to do. We're all mature adults. So Counselor, are you done with your report?
Yes.
Okay. I seriously thought it was going to be like, I thought this is going to be one of my fastest meetings ever. Counselor Topaz?
I have a couple of things. I was asked by a citizen if when the mill property was bought, was there a company that did a survey of the property to recommend to the council? And if possible, could that person get the report? Is there a written report that, that was done that this citizen could get?
Left beyond, before me.
Which property?
The white mill, the whole mill. That would have been what, 2010 or way back then?
Yeah, survey or legal description, we have to.
No, a survey, somebody, like when you buy a house, you have your house inspector going, it says, no, it's got termites, but the pool has got good carp in it, you know? Somebody who looked at the whole property and then gave a description of what they found and their recommendation to the city.
I believe in that, in that transaction, that those, that property description was very thorough when we met.
Well, the next question is, could that, is that a public document they could get?
I don't know.
Kathy, do you know that that's a public document they could get?
I don't, I'd have to check.
Okay, well, that's.
Okay, you're using the term survey in a very kind of nebulous way. There's like audit, there's 14 different kinds of audits.
Yeah, well, somebody went over this, says, no, there's 14 oil wells on it, there's three mines, there's pollution, there's an atom bomb. Someone who looked at the whole thing is, really, I don't think you ought to buy this property because, or we looked at the railroad and it has three ties missing. I, that type of a survey.
There is an environmental survey for sure. There's pretty extensive property corners. I'm not sure about that, but there was a legal description and it's pretty.
You know, this was, you know, a consultant that would say, we looked at the thing and we really don't think you should buy it, or yes, we do think you should buy it because, that's, that's what I'm calling a survey. Was a consultant company hired? Okay, is that report public?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, well, that, that was my question.
How many binders would they like?
Well, I can now go back to the person and say, there is, talk to John, he's got the description, et cetera. That's, that was the question.
Yeah, the difference that the near property, which was purchased under a prospective purchases agreement, where we did a very thorough investigation on the, every environmental variable right there, we did a, giving an environmental indemnity back by the state.
He was interested in the other one, the white mill.
The white paper site, in contrast, came with a indemnification, a 50-year indemnification that the parent company would back any cleanup efforts in total to our desired cleanup, which was not just an industrial level cleanup, but if we wanted to do a park or a residence, some kind of, there's different tiers of cleanup.
So that document exists?
Yes, documented with CRPUD and O.C. Cascade.
Is the person able to get it though?
Well, yeah, I have no idea.
Okay, you say yes, okay.
Yes, the purchase and sell document.
Okay, that, that I'll tell them. Last week, I tried to bring up the fact that we had a resolution that the council gave John the ability to buy or sell the, what I call the marijuana plant. And looking at the charter, it says the council can't do that. We cannot basically vote to get rid of our duty. It was the council's duty to sell it. He could negotiate but couldn't sign it. That was one of the things I wanted to bring up. The reason I wanted to bring that up, Doug passed himself. These are, this is the suit that Boise has brought against the city. And the reason I, I'll get a thumb dry from you. The reason I bring that up is because a number of the comments that the judge made are, have to do with procedure, of which the judge says the city has to do this procedure. And the city, as it's been explained to me, is us, the council, and we didn't do that. If it was done by the staff, it doesn't count. If the staff did it wrong, it's still our problem. And that's why I wanted to give you these things so you can look at some of the procedures that we're in charge of that we didn't do. That's what that is. Next thing, I was over at the food bank, I go over there pretty often. The food bank is being rebuilt and they pretty much are on schedule and with no hiccups going. The other thing that the food bank told me is, in the whole county of Columbia County, the poorest area is St. Helens. This is what they're seeing coming through their door. We do need jobs, boy, do we need jobs. And we need training for jobs. And we're, we're hiding it moderately well. And the schools will tell you some of the problems we have, but we really do need to get work if we don't. So that's, that's what I've got to say.
Yes, we're, we're managing that block rate. We applied for that block rate for the food bank. City is currently managing that block rate.
It's going well.
And it's going well, yes. Counselor Chilton?
I just wanted to say that I'm pleased that things are moving along with the police station. I think that our police deserve this and our community deserves this. And so I'm really pleased that that's moving along really well. I have also continued to work with the police chief about problem solving with the dogs in Sand Island, so stay tuned. We have solutions that are in the works for that. And then finally, I just want to remind everyone that we represent 14,000 people in this community, not just the people sitting in this room. Fifty people that we've seen come to this room, not just the people that running dogs. Go to Pacific Stainless, go to the other parts of the community where they're still working, blue collar families that don't come in here, maybe they don't have time, they have five kids. Ask those people what they think. That's my recommendation for you.
To go out and ask them?
Yes.
Well, usually they, they come to me.
I know, but those are only a percentage of the people that we serve. Yes.
To go knock on doors?
Yes, do it. See what you'll hear.
Okay.
You'll hear a different tune.
I get around.
Well, outside of your comfort zone.
Mostly, no, mostly to events, you know, that kind of thing. So that's where, that's where the, that's where the people show up and advance.
But those aren't the only people.
So you're asking me to really go knock on doors?
Yeah, ask different communities, different people that you're not talking to in this family. Because those, of course, are going to be the same voices that you hear, but there are other members of this community that you have to think about. 14,000.
I understand that. So you're asking me to go to 14,000 doors and knock on doors?
You want to take it literal, Doug, go ahead.
So what are you going to do, Jessica? What are you going to do?
I talked to lots of different communities.
So do I.
The people that I talk to have a different thought than you do though.
I don't think so.
So my people are wrong is what you're telling me.
No, I'm not telling you anything. Your suggestion.
Because they don't come in here and bully and attack us.
You just told me to go and knock on doors, Jessica.
You answer to bullying and attacking and now we see your character.
So.
That is my report.
Okay, Counselor Berkeley? What do you got first?
I still hope that we do have eventually a discussion. Con discussion about tourism that we intended back in April. And I am, was, am concerned by the attacks that came out at public comment. I have, as I reflect on that, I, I did reach out to Tina. I know I was criticized by a number of people for not having done that sooner. But yet I have invited personally a couple of times people in this room to talk to me. Not my number, I haven't heard yet. I did say at the last meeting that I would apologize, I did apologize publicly and that I would apologize.
I would apologize privately to an individual who came to speak before this last, last time. I met with her at the Citizens Day in the Park. It was one, it was a great conversation. I apologized, and then we talked. We talked about our shared interests and what we hope for this city, for this community. And I, I do think that when people have talked to me, I appreciate Councilor Morton reaching out to kind of sound out some things. And, and I think when we talk, you may not agree with me, but I think you will find I am not an unreasonable, unpopular person. And I am distressed that particularly Councilor Chilton had been subjected to these unacceptable comments and judgments of, of, of... So, as far as recalls, Doug, I, I've been subject to a recall attempt before as well. It doesn't send chills down my spine. I'm doing my job. And if citizens decide they want to sign petition and recall, I wouldn't, I won't lift a finger to, to stop the process, but I will focus on doing the job that I believe I was left to do. I'm gonna keep my eye on the prize, so citizens can do what they want to do in terms of that if they, you know, if they really want to. That's what I did when I was on the school board. That recall out, it also didn't go anywhere, but it didn't bother me. I remember, I served at the will of the voters. So, if voters choose to go that route, I'll do my job and I'm not gonna waste any time responding. I also had a great time, otherwise, a great time at the, at the Citizens Day in the Park. Attended the grocery outlet grand opening on Thursday. It's exciting to, to see, to see that. Planning Commission, last, no, it was this month, it was just last week, Tuesday. Not a whole lot on the plate, except for some potential developments at what's been called, it's called Columbia Commons, so where the DMV is now, four parcels of land that are being looked at for development, including a couple of new fast food, national fast food franchises and a, and a jiffy move. So, things are happening on the north side of, of town as, as well. So, that's all just in the preliminary, you know, preliminary phases, but some, you know, some good work continues to be done by our planning commission. I left that, I had to leave that meeting rather abruptly at the end, and I didn't have the opportunity, I'm going to be communicating with the planning commission members to get their ideas of what they think would be a good time, maybe some times and dates to talk, because we have been talking at various times about meeting the council and the commission together. So, I wanna just get out, send out something to them to find out what would be good for them and then talk about what would be good for us, and asking what kinds of things they would like to, to talk about and getting input from the council, what we wanna talk about, so that when we do meet, we actually know what we're talking about, can focus on, on, on those things. And I'm pleased that the Sand Island Castle building went well. I think it's unfortunate when just because someone shows up, it might be seen, does not show up, it might be seen as lack of interest or non-support. I make no apologies, my daughter's moving to New York City this month. This past weekend was a time for spending time with my daughter who, you know, moved to New York City.
Family first.
Yeah, she's been with us, my wife and I, for, you know, a couple of years back. I make no apologies for spending time to do some things, getting ready to, to see my daughter off, who's leaving for New York next week. So, I am pleased that the sand castle competition went well. So, basically, that's, you know, that's, that's my report. Wrap this thing up, I guess.
Yes. All right, yes, so, yeah, just to hit on the sand castles, they said that, that sand over there is unique, that it, it, you can call many different things are, are sand that we have here versus beach sand down on the ocean. And we're, they could put holes all the way through and build these big, it was, so, if the word gets out, this thing really could grow into something that is, the whole island could be decorated. I don't know, so...
If that's so, don't put holes in it. Raccoons will start out over there.
So, again, we're all here, you know, for the right reasons, that's what I do know, it's checks and balances, so, we'll see you guys in a couple weeks. We're good.
Thanks, Hugh.
He's like, this is good for, no crumbs or seaweed. And no tide.